Let's stay right there, come on. Sing blessings and glory. It all belongs to you, Jesus. They all. Hallelujah. Sing blessings and glory. You get the glory, Jesus. You get the honor, Lord. Sing blessings and glory. And honor. They all. Sing blessings and glory. And honor. They all belong to you. Blessings and honor. They all. Come on. Sing blessings and glory. God, we give you all that we have. You get all the glory, Jesus. Anybody come to bless him? Come on, blessings and glory. They all belongs. Come on, man. Everybody, everybody, everybody clap your hands. You get the glory, Lord. I don't know about you, but I come to bless him. I come to praise him. He's been too good. He's been too kind. Blessings and glory. Oh, yeah. Come on, y'all. Sing blessings and glory. And honor. They all belong. Come on. Blessings and glory. And honor. They all belong. Hallelujah. Blessings and glory. And honor. And honor. And honor. Sing blessings and glory. And honor. It all belongs to you, Jesus. Say, and honor. Sing blessings and glory. And honor. They all. Thank you, Chief. For blessing. For blessing me. I'm so grateful. Come on, man. I'm so grateful. He didn't have to do it, but he did. I'm so grateful that he never took his hands off of me. I'm so grateful. He never left my side. So I gotta give him glory. I gotta give him what's due. It's the least I can do. Somebody shout glory, yeah. He's worthy. He's worthy. So much has happened already in the year 2024. But look at your neighbor and say, he kept me. He kept me. He kept me. Yeah. Look at your neighbor and say, I made it, I made it, I made it. How many out here looking for a miracle? I expect the impossible. I feel the intangible. The sky is the limit to what I can hear. Look at your neighbor and say, you gotta believe and receive it. You gotta believe and receive it. That it's already done. That it's already done. I decree and I declare that it's already done. Look at your neighbor and say, manifest, manifest, manifest. I speak it over your life. That whatever it is, whatever you ask from the Lord. Look at your neighbor and say, consider it done. Consider it done. It's about to happen. Oh, Lord. And that's why my prayer in this season is, Lord, whatever you're doing in this season. Don't do it without me. Is there anybody praying in the house on today? Song says, Lord, whatever you're doing in this season, please don't do it without me. Oh, Lord, don't do it without me. Can I sing it one more time? Oh, Lord. Whatever you're doing in this season, don't do it without me. Oh, Jesus, don't do it without me. Come on, everybody lift it up. Sing, Lord. Whatever you're doing in this season. Come on, say. Please don't do it without. Come on, say, don't do it. Without me. Lord. Whatever. Whatever you're doing, Jesus, please don't do it with. Come on, sing it, say, don't do it. Now, look at your other neighbor, tell them, say, Lord. Minister to him, hallelujah. He can handle it. He can fix it. Jesus, don't do it without. Oh, say, Lord, if you're healing, Lord. If you're healing, healing. Oh, Jesus, please don't do it without. Oh, Lord, don't do it without me. Oh, say, Lord, whatever. You're healing, if you're healing, healing in this season. Please don't do it without. I need you right now, Jesus. Lord. Lord, if you're blessed, yes, sir. Lord, if you're blessed. Blessing it. Yeah, Jesus. Oh, Lord. Stay right there, come on, say, don't do it, don't do it without. Here we go. Say, don't, don't do it without me. Come on, listen. Don't do it. Out me, oh, Jesus, don't do it. Savior, do not pass me by. Lord, please don't pass me by. I need you, I need you, Lord. I need you right now, Jesus, don't do it. I need you more than ever, Lord. Say, don't do it. I, don't do it, Jesus. God, I need you to hold my hand. Let me know everything gonna be alright. You made me a promise. You said you'll never leave me. You said you'll never forsake me. Oh, Lord, don't do it without. Oh, Lord, don't do it without. Last time, say, no, don't do it without me. Hallelujah, Jesus. Somebody waving, say, Lord, don't do it without me. Come on. Come on, all over the room, say, Lord, don't do it without me. Don't pass me by. While others die, what calling? Savior, don't pass me by. How many blessed folk do I have in the room today? All my blessed folk just waving, say, don't do it without me. Come on, say it, don't do it without. Say it one more time, don't do it without me. I need a blessing, don't do it without me. I need to feel your presence, don't do it without. I know you can. How many know the Lord is able to make a way, don't? Look at somebody, God's gonna make a way, but don't. One more time, don't do it. Come on, all over the room. Lift your hand and say, don't do it. Give me a little bit more, mother. Don't do it without me. Say it one more time. Can I get somebody to give God real praise in this room on this Sunday morning? Come on, come on, all over the room. Come on, throw your head back and give God a shout. Hallelujah. Amen, amen, amen. You may be seated in the presence of our God. How many, how many blessed folk do I have in the room today? All my blessed folk just waving, say, here I am. Amen, y'all, cut that heat down a little bit, cuz my folk in the balcony, y'all killing them, Lord. They sweating like they're, they fanning like they're in the Sahara Desert. Amen, y'all, cut that heat down a little bit. Um, everybody's well today, how y'all doing, new home? Come on, y'all gotta catch that now, how y'all doing, new home? On top and going higher. Listen, we got a special blessing today. Um, we got a special blessing today. I brought with me today the pastor of our newest location, Jackson, Mississippi. Uh, Pastor Neil Robeson is in, Bishop Neil Robeson is in the room today. Y'all, y'all tell him, come on out here, tell him, tell him he on that country time. Yeah, tell him, go get Bishop Robeson. Amen, it's preaching time. It is good to be alive, isn't it? Man, it's so great to be alive. It's so great to be alive. It's so great to be alive. And, uh, listen, let me, let me say this to, uh, our new home Baton Rouge location. You all made me so proud on yesterday. When I looked up and saw, uh, how strongly we were represented at, at our leadership summit on yesterday, it did my heart great. Amen, so give yourselves a great hand. Y'all give Bishop Robeson and Lady Robeson a hand. Amen. This is my brother beloved, he don't, he don't need no introduction. Uh, he is, he is, um, the pastor of our Jackson, Mississippi location. And that church is a church on steroids. It's growing like wildfire already. And, uh, and we're excited. I want you all, listen, I want you to stand all over the room, and I want you to welcome Bishop Neil Robeson. I ain't gonna sing no song before him, he can sing for himself. Come on, y'all. Everybody say, Bishop? Come on, point your right hand at him, say, Bishop? We're ready for a word. Say, we got your back. Come on, let's give him a great new home, Baton Rouge. God bless you. Come on, one more time, clap your hands and give God the best praise that you can. Father, we love you today and we thank you. We honor you, there's nobody like you. And all of the earth, we give you praise, glory, and honor. We ask that you forgive us of all of our sins and blot out all of our transgressions, washes, cleanse us, and make us whole again. Creating us a clean heart, oh God, and renewing us the right spirit. Cast us not away from your presence, Father, please, please, don't take your Holy Spirit from us. Bless us today, Father, no flesh is on parade, no flesh can glory in your sight. But God, you have your way. Do whatever you wanna do today, Father. We promise after you've done what you're gonna do, we won't touch the credit for it, but we give it back to you. We ask it in the mighty, majestous, majestic name of the one who died for us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Come on, before you sit down, hug somebody and tell them, I believe God has something to say to you today. Hallelujah. 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 Hallelujah, thank you, Jesus. My soul loves Jesus. My soul loves Jesus. My soul loves Jesus. Bless his name. My soul loves Jesus. My soul loves Jesus. Love, my soul loves Jesus. Bless, bless his name. My soul loves Jesus. Can anybody say, my soul loves, loves Jesus? My, my soul loves Jesus. Bless his name. If you feel like y'all feel, lift your hand and say, my soul loves, loves Jesus. Oh, my soul loves, loves Jesus. Oh, my soul loves Jesus. Bless. Bless his name. Hallelujah. Lift your hand and say, hallelujah. Come on, wave your hand and say, hallelujah. Hallelujah. Hallelujah, you may be seated in the presence of the Lord. I honor God today for your pastor, my brother Bishop Samuel Blake's. Thank God for him. Come on, somebody clap your hands, celebrate the man of God today. And to all of you that are present in the room on today, I thank God for my, my sweet darling wife, who's sharing with us on today as well. Come on, thank God. Y'all better clap better than that for my wife. Thank God for her. And, um, all of our children are grown and gone. And, um, and we thank God for that. This year, August, we'll be married forty-three years. And, uh, and, uh, we're enjoying every moment of it. We've left, we've left the cold state of Michigan. And, uh, we now reside in Madison, Mississippi. And, uh, I was talking to our church in Michigan, we still have a church there. And, uh, I was talking to them on the way here. And it's, um, it's nine below zero. And they got about ten inches of snow. And I, and I talked to my mama, my mother-in-law, my wife's mother on yesterday. They were checked in a hotel. My mother-in-law, because all the power in that area in Milwaukee is out, because they got twenty inches of snow in Milwaukee. And I told him, I'll be praying for y'all. They close your eyes and tell me what you see. He said, nothing. I said, that's cause they ain't coming back. Not up that way no more. I thank God for residing, uh, here in the South. And, uh, God has given me the precious privilege to pastor new home, Jackson. If you get a chance, if you ever get a chance, if you ever get a chance to be visiting Jackson, Mississippi every Sunday at three o'clock, we are right there enjoying the Lord. Glad to be connected. I wanna read a pastoral scripture for you on today. It is in, um, First Samuel. First Samuel is in First Samuel. Let me fix this thing, cuz every time you get on these computers and things, they do what they wanna do. You know, I'm gonna just go back to them. I'm gonna go back to my Bible. And because, um, I'm not that computer savvy. I do know a little bit about it, but, um, mm-mm. First Samuel chapter seventeen, and I'm in verse number thirty-nine. Seventeen. Did I say seventeen? Yeah, yeah, First Samuel, chapter seventeen, in verse thirty-nine. Alright? And, uh, here's what it says. And David girded his sword upon his armor. And, uh, he'll say to go, for he had not proved it. And David said unto Saul, I cannot go with these, for I have not. And David put them off him. And he took his staffs in his hand and chose him live smooth stones. You see that? Out of the brook and put them in a shepherd's bag, which he had even, uh, in a script. And the sling was, uh, in his hand, and he drew near to the Philistine. And the Philistine came on and drew near unto David. And the man that bare the shield went before him. Watch this, y'all, verse forty-two. And when the Philistine looked about and saw David, he disdained him, for he was but a youth and ruddy, and of a fair countenance. The Philistine said unto David, Am I a dog that thou comest to me with staffs? And the Philistine cursed David and his guard. Watch this, y'all. I'm getting mad just reading this. And the Philistine said to David, Come to me. I will give thy flesh unto the fowls of the air, unto the beasts of the field. Then said David unto him, He said, nigger, I mean, he said, thou coming to me, you come to me, and thou coming to me with a sword, and with a spear, and with a shield. But I'm gonna kick your tail, he said, but I come to thee in the name of the Lord of hosts, the God of the armies of Israel, whom thou hast defined. He said, today, this day, will the Lord deliver thee into mine hand, and will smite thee, and take thine head off of thee, and, uh, uh-huh, and the carcasses of the host of the Philistine, this day, unto the fowls of the air, unto the wild beasts of the earth, that all the earth may know that there is a God in Israel. Man, that's heavy, that man. That's some good stuff. Watch this. I, I wanna talk about this for just a few minutes. I'm not gonna hold you. The kind of people that God uses. I'm gonna talk about the kind of people that God uses. The kind of people that God uses. You know, this is a brand-new year, right? And, uh, this is a brand-new year, right? This is a brand-new year, right? I just wanna know, all y'all just said, it's, it's, it's a brand-new year. And, um, and God has allowed all of us to be here. And, and by virtue that he has sustained our lives to be here is kind of an indication that he's not finished with you. That he says that. It says that he, he ain't done. He says, I, I, um, you may not know it yet, but I've come today to bring you up to speed, the fact that God has a place for you in the kingdom. And, um, and, uh, there's nowhere in the Bible that indicates that there are few members. Or people that go to church and your job is just to grin and look, and come to church every Sunday, and get your little bit going on to the house. Nope, it ain't in the Bible. There was a place in ministry for all of y'all. I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try it again. There's a place in ministry for all of y'all. I don't care if you ain't, if you ain't got no high school diploma, if you ain't, if you feel like you're uneducated, you feel like you disqualified, you got too high, you know, I don't remember that good, 'cause I smoked too much weed. Yep, I'm in that category too. Yep, yep, yep. I smoke so much weed, for I gotta say, sometime I look in the mirror and scared myself, is that me? Um, because life offers you an array of things, but you gotta make the right choices in order for God to use you. Are y'all with me? There was a man in the scripture, or rather, a man that I read about a book, he wrote, uh, his name was Henry Varley. Now, listen at this. He said that the world has yet to see what God can do with and for and through and in a man who fully and wholly consecrates himself before God. Young man named D.L. Moody. Watch this. He heard those words and determined in his heart to be that kind of a man. Gave himself fully to the will of God and to his life. And the Lord used him to shake up two continents for Jesus. Moody preached to more than a hundred million people during his ministry. And many thousands came to know Jesus as their Lord and Savior. They told me. In, in my school, they said that Neil Robeson, you are less likely to succeed. They told me, they told me, 'cause I used to skip school and skip school in the band room. And my teacher would let me skip school. I, that teacher, I don't know what wrong with that teacher. But that teacher let me skip class in the music room. 'Cause I was so in love with music, so, so she said, go on in there. You ain't gonna do nothing, no way. So I'm going, but my mama didn't know I was skipping school, my dad didn't know. 'Cause if they had have known, I'm skipping school, y'all know. But the fact of the matter is, they told me that I wasn't gonna beat nothing. And so, you know, my wife was, um, okay. My wife really should have went to jail. Because my wife is older than me. And I was young, I was, I was young. I was a child. Uh, when I married my wife, my momma had to sign for me. Didn't they, babe? They did, she, she was over there just waiting, just swinging, just signing. And, um, and so when my wife graduated from high school, I was coming into high school. So when she graduated, I quit. I quit school. Now, I want you to understand, I'm not encouraging anybody to just quit school. I, I, I wanna tell you a story, I just need you to stay there, I'll be there in a few minutes. I quit school. I went on the road with B.B. King. I was B.B. King's band director at seventeen years old. And I toured the world, and I played with Johnny Taylor and all those guys. And I was doing my thing, I was getting high, I was having a I was having a ball. And the words of that one teacher wrung out in my ear that you'll never be nothing. You're less likely to succeed. Be careful what you say to your children. And be careful what you allow somebody else to say to your children. And so I kept doing my thing and doing my thing. And finally, one day after many years of rhythm and blues and doing my thing, I got saved, got to know Jesus, and started pastoring some 30 years ago, 30-plus years ago, and decided at the age of 45 to go back to school and get my high school diploma. I went back to school. I got my high school diploma at 45. And then at 46, I went back to college. And I got a bachelor's of arts in two years. And I went back and got a master's degree. And now I got a doctorate of divinity. I went back and got all my stuff. And ran into that teacher. Same one that said, "You're less likely to succeed." And guess where I ran into her at? At the altar. Where I was preaching and laying hands on her. Y'all ain't saying nothing. I wanted to just shove her down, but I couldn't. The text, the text today, and I promise you, I've used up most of my time giving you that. But the text today is about a young boy named David, who was marked less likely to succeed by his own family. It's one thing for people on the outside to tell you, "You ain't gonna be nothing." But it's another thing for the people in your own house to write you off. Hmm? And Samuel come by that house looking for the next king of Israel. He walked in that house and walked into Jesse's house and says, "Uh, um, uh, the next king is in this house. Where your sons at? Where your sons?" And he lined up all of his sons. And then, and, 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 uh, and the first boy, he laid hands on because he was tall and long and robust and looked like he should look like a king. That's some folk that look like they ought to be king. That needs to clean the bathroom. And that ain't a bad job to do. That ain't a bad job to do. That's not, I'm not saying that's a bad job. I'm just saying you don't need to be king, though. And, and he was tall and strong and muscular and, and all, and all, and all, and all. Samuel got mixed up to me. "Yeah, you him." God had to take Samuel to the side and say, "Hey, man, what you talking about? Don't be, that, he ain't him." He said, "Man looks on the outside, but God looks on the inside." Now, put that boy back in line and go on back out there, because he ain't the one. Samuel began to look with his spiritual eye instead of his natural eye. Look at the name of the chapter and stop looking at stuff with your natural eye. Went down that row of boys and then looked over at their daddy and says to him, "Are you sure that these are all your sons?" And listen at what this low-down daddy turned around and said. He looked at him and said, "Yeah, well, yeah, but, well, I got another boy, but, but he, he ain't him. He out there tending with them sheeps." And he says, "Well, we won't go no farther until you get him and bring him in here." Let me tell you something. If you don't smell like sheep, you don't qualify. The Bible says, "He bring this boy in, bring this boy in. And the minute he poured that oil, it flowed." I've come to tell you that this year, that there was an oil and a grace on your life that's getting ready to flow. And you getting ready to turn some stuff right side up. Y'all ain't saying that. Lean over and tell your neighbor, "Neighbor, this is your year." Y'all ain't saying that loud enough. You don't sound convincing. I said, "Look at somebody and tell them, 'Neighbor, this is your year, where God is about to use you for His glory.'" You been at the back long enough. God is about to expedite time for you. Hallelujah. 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 The Bible says, "He anoints this boy." But his was crazy. He anointed the boy, but he sent the boy back to the field. Let me ask you a question, let me ask you a question, let me ask you a question. Can you know, can, can you handle knowing you a king but going back to the field? Can you handle knowing that you had a kingly anointing, but still out in the, out there in the field? Can you annoy, can you flip hamburgers knowing you still a king? Huh? Can you clean the bathrooms? Can you wait tables knowing that you are next? Tell your neighbor, "I got next no matter where I'm standing." Y'all ain't saying that. Tell them, "I got next at my girlfriend's wedding. I ain't married yet, but I can tell her, hey, guess what? I got next." Watch this. Watch this. I'm gonna cut across the field. The Bible says that, uh, one day David is, um, uh, taking some food out there because all his big, robust, no-count brothers is in the army. And they all out there fighting. Well, standing around. He wouldn't do much fighting. Saul all about there. He's out there, um, he's sent out there to take water and food to make sure that his brothers and all of them got some to drink and eat out there. Yeah. He's out there, you know what I'm saying? He's out there waiting tables. He takes food. While Bishop, while he's on his way out there, he hears, uh, if I break up some words, y'all understand what I'm saying? You know what I mean? He hears some noise out there. And what he hear? He hears a gentleman out there hollering out slanderous remarks. He out there talking about, hear a man talking about, "Your God ain't nothing. You and your fake God. All of you scary soldiers. Your God is a punk." And David got a bag full of food and juice and water and stuff out there in his hand. And he walks in and his brother and all of them back to him and he said, "Hey, is who, is that, is that dude talking about the God of Israel? Is, is that who he talking about? Hey, who you talking about? Because I'm talking about you and your God, and who is you?" David said, "Y'all ain't gonna do nothing? Ain't nobody gonna say nothing? David, get over here, man. Get on behind the wall. Get over here behind this wall, man. David, get over here and drop the food off and go on back home. You ain't got a business out here. Evidently, you ain't got no business out here either. Because all y'all out here hiding. Huh? All y'all out here hiding, letting this man talk about the God of our salvation? The man who helped me fight a bear, kill a lion, dead man? And y'all out here hiding? You out here hiding in the God that saved your life from cancer? You out here hiding in the God who spared your life from diabetes and high blood pressure? Kept you through divorce? And you out here hiding and ain't saying nothing? What's wrong with you? You at work, don't anybody even know you saved? You done been through an eight-hour heart cancer surgery? And God brought you out? And you out there with your, they took your heart out your body, laid it on the table? And he, you is, ain't saying nothing about who brought you through. You in here quiet. The question you should have asked God was, "God, how is it that you could take my heart out of my chest and lay it on the table? And I still be alive?" I promise you, God would tell you, "Yeah, the doctors had your heart in their hand, but I had your life in mine." Y'all ain't saying that. That's the kind of God we serve. Look at the name and tell them, "Come out of hiding." You get yourself up in there in 2024 and you come out of hiding and let somebody know who you are and whose you are. Y'all ain't gonna say nothing? What kind of people do God use? God uses common people. Ain't nothing special about me, no more than I just trust God. And I'm crazy enough to believe Him. He uses common people. Watch, ordinary people God uses. God uses ordinary, obedient, huh? The kind of people that will obey Him and do what He said do and not be scared. God uses consecrated people. People who get up in the morning, don't just jump out the bed and throw your stuff on and leave. Uses people that get up and before your feet hit the ground, your knees hit the floor. God uses the kind of people, when you get up off the floor, off your knees, you put the Bible in your hand and you take at least 10 or 15 minutes and look at the Word. Then you take another 10 or 15 minutes and shut your mouth and don't say nothing. Just look at how good God has kept you all night long. Consecrated people. Huh? Consecrated, He uses people who are related to Him and those who know how to relate to Him. You hear me? He uses people that rely on Him. Because see, I realize something. I married my wife when I was 16 years old. Only God, only God could keep us this long. Somebody asked me, "How y'all stayed married so long?" I'm like, "Well, you know, we had some, um, you know, you know..." God be like, "Boy, shut up and tell the truth." Well, He kept me. He kept me, that's all. I never forget, one time I was nominated for some awards and Stella Awards, and they called me at the radio station. And they was doing some interviews. And my little record was hot, boy. You couldn't tell me nothing, boy. Unlike my mama, I was smelling myself. I knew, I just, man, I was so hot, boy. And my song was playing every time I could, I just, yeah, that's my song. I went to, at the radio station, they had me on the line interviewing me. And the lady says to me on the video, she says, "Bishop Robinson asked me a bunch of questions." And I was, "Yes." Well, you know, I've, um, I've been singing since I was a child. I have several awards and, you know, um, "How did you do it?" "Well, you know, I went to school and I got an education and, you know, and God kept me. And, uh, you know, just been, been around some several years." And she says, she says, "Bishop Robinson, hold there. We're going to a commercial and we'll be right back." And, uh, she says, "Bishop Robinson, stay on the line." And while I was on hold, God, I heard God tell me, "If you don't tell them the truth, I'll show you up." That lady got back on the line. She says, "So Bishop Robinson, what were you saying?" I said, "I wasn't saying that. I used to get high. I could use cocaine. I smoked weed. I was on section eight housing. My rent was $37 a month and I still got evicted." Look at the name and tell them, "Tell the truth." God uses people that He can rely on. Huh? God uses committed people. David was committed. Huh? Committed. He uses them that they are committed in spite of the opposition. Huh? They're committed in spite of the opportunities. They're just committed. I'm committed to God. I'm committed to the cause. Everything in Michigan, my wife and I had just bought a house in Michigan. We hadn't been there a whole year. It was a dream house. 4,000 square feet, me and her. Just room to room. Just whatever we want to do, wherever we want to, just all over it. Just big, beautiful house. Huh? And almost a year that God says, "Go to Mississippi." I answered like this here, hmm? She said, "Go to Mississippi." Like, "Go and come back?" I was like, "No, like, go and stay." "But God, what about this house?" He said, "What about it? I gave it to you. I'll fix all that." I said, "Okay, well, guess we gotta sell the house." Got to resell the house. And the lady who sold us the house bought it back. Her and my wife sit up at the table together while he was working the deal to buy it back, and they both was crying. She was crying because her mama wanted it back because that was the house they grew up in. And my wife was crying because she had to give it back and we had to go to Mississippi. But when we got to Mississippi, God gave us double for the trouble. Y'all ain't saying nothing. If you be committed to the cause, if you be committed to what God said, God has an obligation to open the door. Y'all ain't saying that. Look at the name and tell them, "Watch God open up the door." Can't be scared. God uses courageous people. They're willing to accept the risk. Take the chance. Listen at me. I know who I'm preaching to. But God told me to tell you, "Take the chance." Huh? Look, look, look. God told me to tell you, "Take the chance." Young lady, young lady, take the chance. You, right there. Yep, yep. Take the chance. I know you scared. Stand up. God says, "I know you scared. He says, "When you take the chance this time." He said, "Trust Me and don't trust yourself." God said, "This time, when you walk up to the door, it's gonna be like Kroger's. It's gonna swing open." God says, "Trust Me. I know you got hurt. I know your heart got broken. But God says, 'Trust Me! This time, in spite of it all, trust Me.'" Come on. Don't be scared. Be courageous, be of good courage. God's gonna give you just what you need to get through it all. David was courageous. They're willing to accept the ridicule. They call us crazy. They were right. I am crazy. Crazy enough to trust God. They're willing to accept the results. Because you got to believe God in spite of. David told that giant that was talking crazy. He says, watch this, and I'm done. He says, before he goes out to fight, Saul tells him, "Well, since you gonna fight, come here and put this on." And he throws on his armor. He puts his armor on David. He put his breastplate. He put his sword in his hand. Put his helmet on his head. And David was standing there. "Come here, honey. My pants look big. I lose the weight. If y'all put me on Facebook, I'm gonna knock you out. Hope your teeth come out." Watch this. Put that coat on, my wife. Said, "Put that on." That's what David looked like with Saul's coat on. And told him, "Come here, baby, come here. Come on, I need you to fight. Fight me now, fight. Fight me." Look at this. "You pretty good." I said, "Wait a minute. He wasn't fighting like that. We're gonna talk when we get back in the car. You almost hit me. Give my coat back. This part of the sermon ain't working right. You weren't supposed to do that. You were supposed to act like you couldn't do it. I think she mad at me about something. I'll make it up to you later." You see that, Deion? She, she got close, like, in proximity. Look here. David told Saul, "This too big for me." He said, "I can't fight with this on, man. This armor don't fit me." Let's go, hey, watch this. This year, stop using the other folk's stuff to fight. The fight that God got for you to fight, it don't fit you. You hanging out with some friends that's trying to get you to do it that way. That don't fit you. Do you hear what I said? I said, "That don't fit." You hanging out with some folk that's good to you, but they ain't no good for you. It don't fit you. That don't fit you. All that cussing and acting the fool. That don't fit you. Huh? David said, "I can't fight with this on, man. This, this too big." He said, "Well, what you gonna, what you gonna, what you gonna use?" He said, "Just take this off, man." Took it off of him. David went over to the nearest creek, creek, and found some rocks. Found five stones. And put them in his little pouch with his little slingshot thing and told, told Saul, "I got it. Let me tell you what you gotta use. You gotta use what you're familiar with." You gotta use what you already proved. Huh? You gotta use- You gotta use the weapon that you've already proved. You've been using all the time. Why you fixing on something that ain't broke? You're gifted and God has been using you now as you coming to the kingdom and you gonna pick up something new. The deal is, God is gonna use what you've been using, but then guess what? You gonna put it in his hand. Bible says that he takes those stones. Wow. This joker talking crazy? He swung that stone and busted him in the center of his head. And the Bible says that the stone didn't just hit him in the forehead, but it sunk in. Watch this. And killed him. And David didn't even have a sword to cut his head off. So guess what he did? God's gonna give you the power to take the enemy's weapon. He took the enemy's weapon, cut his head off and said, "Here it is." What are you saying, Bishop? I'm saying to you that this is the year where God is getting ready to give you victory because he's gonna use common people. I'm done. Listen to me very carefully. Listen to me very carefully. I want you to understand this. Play real softly, but I want you to understand something. You ain't gotta do it like everybody else do it. You gotta do it like God's telling you to do it. I'm telling you, listen at me. Give me five minutes, I'm telling you. Look at me. Y'all look at me. Look at me real good. Look at me good, real good. Look at me real good. Man, God can use you in a way that will blow your mind with all of the odds against you. Couple of years ago, couple of years ago, couple of years ago around Christmas time, um, on Thanksgiving Day, my mama had a heart attack. Thanksgiving Day, she had a heart attack. And, um, they, they lived in Durant, Mississippi. And they were visiting in Milwaukee and they went up to walk. My father passed in Milwaukee for over 40 years. But they went to Milwaukee to visit and while they were visiting, my mother had a heart attack on Thanksgiving Day. She stayed on life support from Thanksgiving Day to December 16th. On December 16th, my mama died. And my daddy had just left the hospital saying about my mama. And went back to my sister's house. And, uh, so we went to the house that night and said, "Daddy." And my daddy called all of us, baby, he said, "Yeah, baby." I said, "We said, Daddy, Mama, Mama died tonight." He looked and said, "She did?" I said, "Yeah, Daddy, Mama gone." My brothers and sisters were standing around. He said, "Daddy, we serving." He said, "Mama gone?" I said, "Mama gone, Daddy." He said, "You show? Show Daddy?" My daddy went to bed that night and he died that night. One year later. One year later. I'm preaching in Grand Rapids, my wife and I in Grand Rapids. I'm preaching up a storm. I'm preaching up a storm. I'm getting into. Whoo, I'm getting it, man, I'm getting it. And while in the middle of my, right in the middle of my preaching, I coughed. My wife was looking at me in the audience, I coughed. And they gave me a white towel. And when I coughed, there was blood in the towel. So I kept preaching. I'm feeling like I got, I got that thing working, man, I got that thing. And I, and I, and I coughed. More blood. And I noticed my wife looking at me like this. I wouldn't look over there, I just kept coughing. Blood. I said to myself, "You better stop." I stopped, went to town. Went back home to Michigan. Went to the doctor. The doctor says, "You got pneumonia in your lung." It's okay, good, that, alright, that's, that made me feel better. He gave me antibiotics, I'm almost done. Gave me antibiotics for seven days, but I coughed up blood every day for those seven days. I went back, I said, "Doc, something wrong, cause I'm still coughing up blood." He said, "Let me check, did an MRI on my lung." He said, "You got double pneumonia, your other lung is, uh, bleeding, so there bruise." So he says, "I'm gonna give you a heavier antibiotic." He gave me a heavier antibiotics for 10 days, came off the road, no preaching, no singing, just quiet. And I coughed up blood for the next 10 days. Finally, me and my wife went back to the doctor again and he says, "Man, I don't know what's wrong." So he sent me to a pulmonary specialist, a lung doctor. And we walked in that room where the lung doctor was. Put me in a room and said, "I'm gonna do a PET scan on you." He says, "I'm gonna lock you in a room. And while I lock you in this room, we gonna cover everything." And they came in with biohazardous masks on. They were covered in everything, they covered everything in the room. They closed the door and they walked in with this silver tank like some, you see on some sci-fi movie. And they came in with a big, and I said, "What's that for?" They said, "We gonna shoot you with this." And he says, "When we shoot you with this, it's radiation. We can't be in the room with you for the next hour and a half. You gotta be there by..." So they shot me up with this stuff and they left me in the room by myself. They didn't tell my wife where I was, so she thought something had happened, I was gone or something, I died or something. She had to wait outside. I'm in the room and the doctor came out. When he came back in an hour and so later, he took me and my wife and threw it off and this is what he said to me. He says, "He brought me in a room and he put my lungs up on a big screen like a LED wall." He says, "Bishop Roberson," he says, uh, you know, he says, "You see your lungs here?" I said, "Yeah." He said, "You see all the antibiotics we gave you?" He said, "He said, 'This is where your lungs are healed from the antibiotics.'" He says, "But see this right here on the side of your lung, which is this one?" He says, "I, I don't know." He says, "When the results come back." I said, "What, what do you think it is?" He said, "They don't pay me to think. They pay me to know. I can't tell you what I think." He said, "But let me tell you best like this." He said, "If everything that we shot into you with the radiation, if it comes out of your system, he says, "You just got a really bad infection." He said, "If it don't come out of your system, you have lung cancer." Me and my wife left that house, we said, "Oh, we know there ain't nobody infected." Cause I knew I ain't got no lung cancer, cause my lung feel bad. On our way home, we riding on the way home in the truck, we quiet. I'm looking at my wife out of the corner of my eye, because I'm looking at her. And she's looking at me. We're riding and while we riding, all of a sudden the phone rang. While we riding, the phone rings. And the doctor says, "Where are you?" I said, "We headed home." He said, "Come back." We went back to the hospital, got back to that doctor's office. He put them things on the screen, said, "Bishop Roberson, I'm sorry to tell you, man. I didn't want to tell you this. You have lung cancer." I said, "I got what?" He said, "You got lung cancer." So immediately I went home and I started preparing to die. I called my children. We called all of our children around. I called Bishop Sam. I called everybody, I says, "Hey, man, I got lung cancer, I'm, I'm, I'm sick." I told my church and I'm telling them the extent it was, but one of the ladies that was a preacher, cause I got so sick until I couldn't stand up and preach, I had to sit down and preach. And I started losing weight, as you can tell, that's over right now, but I, but I, but I, I was losing weight, I was losing weight. And then, then one night, the Lord told me, he says, "Um, don't stop singing and don't stop preaching." And I kept saying, kept preaching, but I was getting sicker and sicker by the day. Give me three minutes, I'm done. I was getting sicker and sicker by the day. I'm losing weight, I'm so sick. And then finally the doctor comes in to me. Uh, so for six months straight, six months straight, I coughed up, clogged the blood for six months straight every day. And a woman of God in our church walked up to me, her name is Evangeline Silesia Franklin. She walked up to me, she says, "Bishop, will you allow me to minister to you?" And I trusted her. I said, "Yes, ma'am, cause when you know you down on cancer, you want somebody to tell you something?" She walked up to me, she gave me two sheets of paper. On the two sheets of paper, there were, uh, 100 healing scriptures. She says, "The Lord told me to tell you, if you shut the TV off and shut everything off and meditate on this word, you and the word will become one and you will become the walking word." We shut our TVs off for six months, we shut everything down. And we started praying and reading the word every day. And you would thought I feel better. I felt worse. But I kept reading. Finally, I was in, I was in Hammond, Louisiana. Cause two days before that, they called me back in and did a biopsy. Liver's still there. So I waited two days and flew to Hammond, Louisiana. And while I was in Hammond, Louisiana, I was preaching. And I was telling people that God is a healer. And I'm just preaching, telling people that God is healing you, God is healing you. And while I was preaching, 10 o'clock at night, my phone rang. While I'm preaching. It was the doctor calling me at 10 o'clock at night. And this is what he said to me. He said, "Bishop, where are you?" I said, "I'm in Hammond, Louisiana." He said, "Make your way back home." I said, "I'll be there in about two days." He said, "No, come tomorrow." I changed my flight and flew back home. And when I walked in the hospital, I told my wife, I said, "Wait in the lobby, I'm going back." She said, "No, baby, I gotta go with you, I don't know what they gonna say." I said, "No, wait right here. I'll be right back." And did you know, did you not know, did you not know, when I went back in the back, when I got back there, the doctor said to me, he said, "Tell me where is your wife?" I said, "She out there in the lobby." He said, "Go get her." I went and got her and brought her back there. He sat both of us down. And this is what he said to me. He said, "You, you saw the cancer on the screen, did you?" I said, "I saw it." Another doctor came and said, "And we saw it too." He said, "But I cannot explain these results on this screen." He said, "All of the cancer I seen, I can't find it now." Because God uses ordinary people. When God got a purpose for your life, God's purpose will over exceed what the enemy's trying to do. Look at somebody and tell them, "This is your year." And God's gonna do something special for you. Let them, high five three people and tell them, "Hold on! Help is on the way." I'm finished. I'm finished. I'm finished. I, I, I just, I just want you to know, just like God used David, just like God used me, just like God uses Bishop Sam, God's getting ready to use you. Tell somebody, let them use you. Stop trying to figure it out. Stop disqualifying yourself and let God do it. Because, you know why? Because God uses ordinary people. Clap your hands and give God praise. Somebody lift your hand and say, "Use me, Lord, use me, use me." You may be seated, we're getting ready to go in just a moment, but if you are here today and you need to give your heart to God, Bishop just got through telling you, ain't gotta be a special breed of person. God can use you. And the wonderful thing about God is God can take you just like you are. But how many of you know he loves you too much to leave you like you are? He'll take you like you are, but he'll make you what he wants you to be. And if you are here today and you wanna give your heart to God, I want you to get up and I want you to make your way to this altar. Maybe like David, you were voted least likely to succeed. But today, God wants you to know that in spite of what anybody said about you, in spite of what you've been through in life, God has a future in mind for you. God has a destiny in mind for you. If you're that person and you know God's talking, you get up and make your way to this altar. Don't wait for any other service, don't wait for any other time. On this Sunday, God is knocking at the door of your heart, but he ain't gonna break it, you gotta let him in. Come on, come on, somebody saying, "I will. I will follow you. I will follow you forward." Come on, all over the room, somebody wave, say, "You make all things new." You make. Yes, you do. You make. And I will. Follow you. Give God a hand for salvation today. Amen. Come on, y'all clap better than that. Can we give God a great hand for Bishop Neil Roberson? Amen, amen, amen. Amen. Praise the Lord, praise the Lord. Now listen, listen, we're getting ready, uh, we're getting ready to give, we're getting ready to give, we're getting ready to give. And I want you to be serious about your giving. I want you to be serious about your giving, understanding that giving is a part of worship. Everybody say, "Giving is worship." Giving is worship, giving is worship. It's amazing how serious we are about receiving, but how casual we are about giving. When giving is the prerequisite for receiving. Give, give and it shall be given unto you. Good measures pressed down, shaken together and running over. Just because you're not in a begging church doesn't mean you ain't supposed to be a giving church. Alright? We know that whatever we have, how many of you know whatever you have, God gave it to you? Alright? I want you today to honor the Lord in your giving. I want you to be serious about your giving. And I want you to name your seed. My father taught me that, put a name on your seed. The Bible says, "When Job sowed seed, he sowed it for his children." Some of y'all got children you need to sow seed for. Some of you got health issues you need to sow seed for. And as you plant that seed, you obligate the hand of God to move on your behalf. Everybody today who needs a tithing, offering, pastor's love, whatever envelope you need, slip your hands up where your arses are gonna serve you really quickly. If you, if they didn't get you coming in, if you need an envelope, uh, just slip your hands up, ushers will serve you really quickly. Let's be a blessing to the house of God and let's do it without having to be begged. Those who are watching online, you can give, uh, through our church's Cash App, Dollar Sign, N H M, 1030. Or you can give through PayPal on our church's website, www.newhome ministries.org. You can give text to give, N H F W C B R A five four two four four. Uh, you can give through Giftlifer, put in New Home Full Gospel Ministries. You see a little picture of me and a bigger picture of our church. But let's give today and let's be a blessing to the house of God. Praise the Lord, amen. Let's prepare our hearts to give. As you get your gifts prepared, even if you're giving electronically, lift that phone, lift that envelope. Father, thank you for every gift and every giver. Bless your people. Open the windows of heaven and pour our blessings that they will not have room enough to receive. We thank you in advance because we know it's already done. In Jesus's name, amen. Alright, let's give today.
Let me hear you say, "Bless, bless, bless, bless. Say, I'm blessed, you're blessed. Say, he's blessed, she's blessed. Everybody's blessed. We're blessed, we're blessed in the sin. We're blessed in the fear. We're blessed when we come and when we go. We cast down every stronghold. Sickness and poverty must cease. For the devil is defeated. We are blessed, we're blessed in the sin.
How many of y'all blessed? Come on, sing that.
We're blessed when we come and when we go. We cast down every stronghold. For the devil is defeated. We are blessed. It was late in the midnight hour. God's gonna turn it around for me. It's gonna work in my favor. Yes, it will. Late, late in the midnight hour. God, God's gonna turn it around. It's gonna work in your favor. Yes, it will. Late, late in the midnight hour. God, God's gonna turn it around. It's gonna work in your favor. Yes, it will. Late, late in the midnight hour.
God will.
God's gonna turn it around and 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 around. Yes, it will.
Come on. Amen, amen, amen. Look at somebody, tell them I'm blessed. Praise the Lord. Amen, amen, amen. Amen, amen, amen. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Father. Glory to God. Well, clap your hands and give God praise. How many of y'all received that word today? God uses common people. Did y'all hear what I said? God uses common people. God uses- God uses common people. God uses committed people. What was the other C? There was another C. Consecrated people. Common people. Consecrated people. Committed people. Those are all words that we need to go into this new year with, right? Look at somebody, tell them, "Neighbor, tell her if you're a common person, but you're a consecrated person, and you're a committed person, look at somebody, tell them, "God is gonna give you an uncommon blessing." Boy, y'all missed that. How many of y'all believe that there's some common people that's getting ready to get some uncommon blessings? Uncommon blessings. Amen. Everybody stand up. We're getting ready to go. No, we got... Wait, wait. Y'all sit down. Y'all sit down. Y'all sit down. Next time Bishop Robison comes, I ain't gonna make him do it today, but next time, I'm gonna make him sing his song. Press, press your way through. Press your way through. Can't give up now. Press your way, your way through. Press your way through. Whoa. Press your way, your way through. God got something waiting. If you press your... Your way through. Praise your way through. Somebody going through something, I dare you to praise your way through. Yeah. You, you can't give up now. Pray your, your way through. Press your way through. Tears in your eyes. Pray your way, your way through. God, God got something waiting. Pray your... Your... Oh, your, 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 your way through. Look at somebody, tell somebody, you gotta shout your way through. How many of y'all know there's a raise in your praise? Tell somebody, shout your way through. Come on, look somebody now, tell them, "You can't give up now. You gotta shout, shout your way through. Oh, shout your way through." Tell somebody, "God's got something waiting." Come on, look at somebody behind you. Tell them, "God's got something waiting." Tell somebody else, "I don't know what you've been through, but God's got something waiting. But you gotta shout your way through." Hallelujah. Somebody lift your hand and say, "Hallelujah." Come on, look at somebody. Tell them, "The storm is almost over. God's getting ready to do something special. It's almost over." Hallelujah. Man, I feel God in the room. Somebody ought to give God praise right where y'all are. Come on, there's a raise in your praise. There's deliverance in your praise. There's healing in your praise. There's breakthrough in your praise.
Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Hallelujah.
Look at somebody, tell them, "The storm is almost over. The storm is passing over." Somebody say, "The storm is passing over."
Thank you, Lord. Yes, thank you. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Jesus. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Hallelujah. Great morning, New Home. Thank you, Lord. Don't forget to follow New Home Family Worship Center and Bishop Sam on Facebook for a powerful virtual Bible study every Tuesday night at 7:00 PM. If you have experienced the loss of a family member, please notify the ministry by calling the church office at 225-357-1300. The Pastoria Committee today, as they did last week, have hot beverages. They have... We have hot cocoa, hot coffee, hot tea, $1. So don't leave. I need everybody to go that way and help support our cause, which is our Pastor Pastoria anniversary. The Children's Church Ministry staff is asking that parents of children between the ages of four through nine that are interested in their child attending Children's Church would come to the front of the church following services today to complete the necessary form and a sign-up sheet with Sister Rhonda Clark and her team. Family, mark your calendars for our new members fellowship on Sunday, February 4th, 2024, immediately after service. If you join the ministry between January 2020 and now, this meeting is for you. Come out and meet your pastor, church leaders, and hear of the great auxiliaries we have for you to be part of. If you plan to attend, registration is required. Please sign up in the vest of you if you will need a copy of your 2023 financial statement. This is only for persons that give through the church, and that means your cash or your personal checks. But if you give electronically, you can download your statements from the digital platform. Prayer is? Join us on the prayer call every Monday night at 6:00 PM. The phone number is 712-832-8330. The access PIN number is 728-2834-POUND. Please submit all announcements in advance, two weeks in advance, to our Minister of Health, Director, Minister of Kimberly Spoor. And we do have Sister Trina's gonna come before you now.
Let's give her a hand as she comes. Amen.
Good morning, New Home family. It's a great morning. It is. I just want to say thank you. Thank you, Bishop Robison. That was such a blessing for us on this morning. And coming off of yesterday, I can't get it no better than this. New Home family, I am here to welcome you to join us at our Women Empowerment Brunch. And it's going to be on January 27th, which is coming up. It's for 11:00 AM. The doors will open at 10:30, and it will end at 2:00 PM. Our very own Bishop R.C. Blakes will be the guest speaker. And as Bishop Robison said, God will use ordinary people. So women, He would use ordinary women, and we can do extraordinary things. So I need y'all to show up. If you're planning to attend, Ms. Arsina, please stand so they can see who you are. She will be in the foyer along with myself. If you have not purchased your ticket, please do so. If you plan to attend, please sign up with us, because now we need the actual head count, so we can prepare for everyone to enjoy the delicious food. So we're looking forward to you. Come on out. We're gonna change the trajectory for 2024, women. We're going to do extraordinary things in this season. This is our season. This is our time. And I need y'all to show up, so we can do just that. God can use all of us, and we can work together and make New Home a better place.
Standing all over the room. Hallelujah. After the storm clouds have passed over, everything will be all right. Look at somebody, tell them, "After the storm clouds have passed over..." Tell somebody, "Everything will be all right." Tell us some person behind you. "After the storm clouds have passed over..." Somebody wave and say, "Everything will be all right." After... I feel that. "The storm clouds have passed over..." Somebody wave and say, "Everything will be all right." Storm clouds have passed over. I want you to know, everything, everything, every little bit of thing is gonna be all... All right. Look down your road, tell somebody, "I know it will." Come on, y'all act like y'all scared. I dare you to look at somebody, tell them, "I know it will." Hallelujah. "After the storm clouds have passed over..." Somebody wave and say, "Everything will be all, be all right." Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Somebody just turn around one time, say, "I feel God turning it around right now." Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Everything will be all right. I love you all. I want you to have an amazing day. Y'all know I gotta get on the road. Have an amazing day. You serve an amazing God. Every right hand elevated. Repeat after me. Much prayer, much power. Say, "Little prayer, little power." Say, "No prayer, no power." Somebody wave and say, "I'm on time. Where you going, New Home? I love y'all. I'll see ya."